I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Seeing none, if we could rise to the members' allegiance, please.
I would like to lead this through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
The first item we have is public comment, and we have Steve Simonian signed up for public comment.
Since the last Board of Selectment meeting concluded, I had planned to come up here and speak on the public comment regarding the comment that had been made during that meeting. The fact that several veterans contacted me since then made it even more so imperative that I encapsulate those comments in my own. Since the U.S. military's inception through the end of the year in 2012, more than 40 million Americans have uttered the oath, "I, insert name, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic, in one form or another." Of note is the fact that the oath clearly stipulates support and defend the Constitution, not the people, not the land, not anything else. The Constitution embodies everything that encompasses America. It is the heart and soul of this nation's belief system, and it has guided us for 237 years. It is the basis for establishing all aspects of government, including this board, and it is the lifeblood pumped from the heart of this nation to every corner of it. In raising our hands to take that oath, we commit ourselves to putting our lives in harm's way, if need be, to defend that Constitution. Just yesterday, we celebrated Veterans' Day, a day set aside to remember all who have served. I am proud to say that among the 40 million-plus, three uncles, my father, my brother, and myself have served. We're not anything special. We're no different than those other 40 million Americans that chose to defend the Constitution and what it symbolizes, the same Constitution that was so cavalierly dismissed in commentary at the October 8th Selectmen's Meeting. You are welcome to your opinion. I would be a hypocrite to stand here and say that you don't have that right, since millions of Americans have defended that right for nearly two and a half centuries. However, in my opinion, which I am also entitled to have, the comments to the effect that the Constitution does not belong are a disgrace and a slap in the face to every veteran and current member of the Armed Forces of this great nation who defend that Constitution.
The next item we have is public hearings and presentations, which it's too early for. I'll entertain a motion to move up item 7A.
Second. Motion to move up 7A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed or voted? Regional Community Innovation Challenge Grant.
Through the chair, the town of Auburn was contacted by the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission to ask if we would be interested in participating in a regional CIC grant. We did vote at the last meeting to participate in Phase III of the Stormwater CIC grant, and we've been asked also to, if we would like to participate in a grant for which the town of Rutland is the lead applicant to the state. And this would be for the purchase of a bucket truck for clearing and maintaining our highways and roadways from hazardous trees and branches. And this is a great opportunity for the town to participate in this type of grant. And here's, on behalf of the town of Rutland, is the DPW Director, who is willing to answer any questions. I believe I had mentioned this at the last board meeting, that we may be coming back to and asking for your authorization to enter into this grant. And I believe there are four communities that would be participating in this grant. If you'd like to come up.
You're welcome to come up to the microphone. Give your name and address for the record, please.
Ladies, thanks for seeing me. Thanks for having me. My name is Gary Kelleher, Rutland, the DPW Director. Address is 17 Pomeroy Road in Rutland, Mass. There would be, with Auburn, there would be a total of six towns. They are Barry, Hubbardston, Okam, Paxton, and Rutland, hopefully as well with Auburn. We applied for this last year. It did not, it was not approved. It was sent in on time. The deadline date is November 22nd. I do have a spec sheet here, and I have the signature page for the chair. And the price of this bucket truck is $188,675. This is fully funded by the CICG. So, the way I look at, from the small towns I've talked to, and Julie, I don't know if you've given me a price, but we spend roughly into $7,000 to $9,000 price range per year of clearing trees. Up where we are, we're still in the process of clearing hangers and trees from the 2008 ice storm. We consider this to be a proactive move, as opposed to reactive. I'm sure you all know that if we go out and hire a tree company to do one tree at a time, as the folks call for, and need to be done, it could cost upward of $1,000 per tree. So this is, we're very excited that Auburn is, hopefully will participate with us in this, because we feel here it's strength in numbers. There's a lot of particulars. A great truck, comes with a full warranty, comes with training for both the bucket aspect as well as operation of the truck. We already have an emergency, a forestry maintenance, regional forestry maintenance trailer that comes fully equipped. This does come with a chip body, so therefore dumps. And we just think it'd be great for the towns, Auburn included. So, like I said, I have everything here. We're very excited about this. We have to meet the deadline by the 22nd, but we're very excited with the possibility of Auburn joining us, as the other towns are as well, so you know. And we just think we can do nothing but expand on this program.
Do members have any questions? Mr. Olstrom?
Through the chair, I think it's a great idea. I think there's something that, you know, something we can share between all the towns. My only question is, is there some type of a program, priority, need, so everybody gets even use of the truck as it's going through?
Good question. There's six towns, obviously 12 months in the year, so every town would get two months per year. Now, if we were hit with a hurricane, tornado, extreme weather of any kind, ice storms again, the heads of the individual towns would have to sit down and decide, priority-based, where that truck could go. Hopefully, we'd all team together. I mean, I think this just opens a flood of opportunity for all of us to help each other. If something, if Auburn got hit with a tornado and Rutland didn't, the truck would come, and we could send people with it, as we do anyway, because we're all part of the municipal assistance program. But 12 months, we'd have to decide, my thought, and it's just my thought, we are the host community, that it would be one month, twice a year. That way, we would be able to plan for the next time we had the truck. That's the way, that's what I thought processed. And also, this year, we've enlisted the assistants of Janet Pierce of CMRPPC, and I think that's very helpful. She's helped me draft and put some finishing touches on this grant application. So we really, really feeling good about this, has a good chance to succeed.
Thank you. I think that I would support, there's no question. Looks like there's been a plan in place, and there's a thought process there, and I think it's a positive move, so I would support this.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to vote to authorize participation and accept grant funds for the Regional Community Innovation Challenge.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I approach for the signature of the chair?
Also entertain a motion to move up agenda item 7B, the police mutual aid agreement.
Motion to move up 7B.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Chief? Good evening.
Good evening. The town manager had asked me to come forward tonight to speak to you ever so briefly, I know you have a long agenda, regarding this mutual aid agreement with the city of Worcester. Chief Jim from the city of Worcester, and the city manager have been kind enough to enter into an agreement, or offer to enter into an agreement with us, which would assist police departments from throughout central Massachusetts with essentially three different things. Number one, when we transport prisoners to hospitals, it would give us police powers in the city of Worcester at those hospitals and at those facilities. And number two, it would also give us police powers and authority at the courthouse in Worcester when we're there. And number three, it would cover issues of when we go to, it's called a "le blank" decision, it's a State Supreme Court decision. If you go and try and stop a motor vehicle, and they don't quite stop in the particular jurisdiction that you originate from, you can't take police action, and this would clear that up as well.
Are there any questions? Mr. Simonian.
Where, in the hospital and in the courthouse, where it would grant you police authority?
Anywhere in the hospital. We've transported patients down to emergency mental health before UMass, and officers have actually been assaulted there in the hospital, in the emergency room.
Well, it makes sense to me. I just, how is it, just so I can have a frame of reference contrasted to, how is it currently handled if you're in that situation?
Well, as has been the case with previous issues, when Auburn police officers have been assaulted there, we've had to go to the hospital police department and ask them to take out criminal complaints against the individuals that have assaulted police officers there. This would give us the opportunity to do that ourselves.
Okay, thanks. Makes sense.
Did you have anything to add? Are there any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to provide the mutual aid agreement with the, with the chief and the town manager?
Excuse me, Julie? The agreement with the town manager or the chief?
Through the chair, the town manager would be the signatory on this, per town council. So we're just looking for the support of the board for me to enter into a contract for the mutual aid.
So, town manager's support.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We have a 7-10 tax classification hearing. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the hearing is now open.
Well, good evening. Obviously, we're back here. It seems like it's been a very fast year. And basically, what I have is a presentation. I'm going to run you through basically the reason we're here tonight, and then some of the scenarios as to the various votes that the Board of Selectmen are going to make tonight. If you have questions, I'm not sure how you want, do you want them handled as we go, or do you want to wait?
I think what we'll do is we'll let you go through the presentation. Board members can ask any questions of you or Mr. Kasnovich. I'll open it up to public comment, then board questions and comments, and then we'll take action.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have equipment failure already. And run here. I guess not. Okay, so basically, this is just to let you know two things. These are estimated calculations at the time that I've prepared this. There could be some changes to the final tax rate. There are also additional handouts that are not going to be part of this presentation, but the presentations and all the handouts are available over here on the side. And first of all, the purpose of this is Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56 allows a shift in the tax burden between property classes. What we're doing here tonight does not change the total tax levy for the community. It's simply going to determine what the share to be borne by each class is. What we do not do is determine the tax rate for the town, just distribution, and this is not going to determine how much money can be raised. Town meeting voters determined that when we went to town meeting about two weeks ago. So, basically, what we're doing is apportioning what town meeting has voted to spend. The tax levy for the town is determined by town meeting appropriations and expenditures, and state and county charges. We pay for the tax levy using town revenues, such as excise fees, enterprise, and other available funds, total taxable real estate and personal property, state aid and reimbursements, new growth, and then debt exclusions and overrides. Just kind of a review, this was a certification year for the town of Auburn, so we've seen a little bit more than the normal shift in between the various property values. Properties that are residential in nature are adjusted annually to full and fair market value. This is a certification year, so they were also approved by the Department of Revenue. Things that affect the value can be the style of the property, the condition of the property, interior, exterior features, and the size. Commercial and industrial properties are based on an income approach to value per the Department of Revenue. Each year, we send out questionnaires to our commercial and industrial tenants, businesses, and they send it back with information that is used in the preparation of those values. Personal property for the town is net book value, new minus depreciation. Everybody's value is determined using the same criteria to keep it even. There are four votes that are going to be taken tonight. The first vote is going to be on the residential factor. This is the one that we all think of for the classification hearing, where it shifts the tax rate between residential and commercial properties. The second vote that's taken tonight is an open space discount that would shift the tax burden within the residential classes to grant an open space discount. The third is a residential exemption that shifts the burden once again within the residential classes. And the fourth and final vote is the small commercial exemption. And that shifts the burden within the commercial industrial classes to give a discount to qualifying properties. This is just a chart that's kind of showing you the percent of the levy for the four property classes over the past 14 years. You'll see on the outside ring, that was back in 2000, and the inside ring is representing 2014. And you'll see that the makeup of Auburn, there've been some shifts within the commercial industrial, some shifts in personal property, and, you know, in between all of them. But you'll see that the residential portion has remained fairly stable over the years. There's really been very little change. Basically, what the tax levy is, the levy limit is the maximum amount the town can levy in a given year. That would equal last year's levy, plus new growth, plus 2.5% of last year's total levy. Maximum allowable levy is the levy limit plus debt exclusions and any overrides. And the excess levy capacity is the levy limit minus the amount that we actually appropriate. This is kind of just bringing you through the process. For fiscal year 2013, we had a total levy of $34,879,313. We had no amended new growth, so the figure that we're starting with for 2014 is that $34 million. 2.5% of that, which is our allowable levy increase, would be an additional $841,983. Our growth for fiscal year 2014 was $587,951. When you add those numbers, there was no proposition two and a half override this year. Our levy limit for 2014 was $36,339,247. We have a debt exclusion for the high school that's still on there. So, for fiscal year 2014, our maximum allowable levy is $37,784,403. As we go through the presentation, you will see that we did not spend everything that we were allowed to spend. We're well below that limit. For the current fiscal year, our residential growth has gone up. That's our most stable growth. It's not a subject to be skewed by individual properties. Commercial growth is also up this year. These are numbers that can be affected annually by one significant new property or addition going on to the tax rolls. Industrial growth is actually down this year. We've had very little movement. These are numbers that can be affected, once again, by significant property being added, or even in the case of a significant property being demolished or converted to a different use. Our personal property growth is down this year. That's not a sign. These numbers are fairly volatile. Public utilities and changes in manufacturing status can drastically affect them. But one thing, by the personal property growth going down, and one of the trends that I've seen, is that when you have a tough market like we've had for the past five years, these businesses are coming in, they're failing, they're moving out, so you have constant new accounts being added. That has slowed down, which indicates that a lot of these businesses are coming into Auburn, they're succeeding, and they're staying. So, even though the growth is down, it still can be a very good sign. This is showing our trends over a period of four years. You can see that that residential growth, there's a little dip here and there, but that's been fairly stable. Our commercial growth was down for the first few years, and then you'll see that this year, that has gone to a spike. Personal property kind of waves up and down, but you will see that the industrial growth, we had growth back in 2011, it went down a little, up a little, and then this year, you'll see that it's pretty much, there's nothing. It was very, very little change in that. The notable changes that we've had is the final phase of Lundgren Honda has gone online. Diamond Chevrolet has added a new auto service building. And Fuller Automotive has put on an addition, and then we also had an addition to Herb Chambers. So these are some of the things that have affected our commercial growth. This is showing you the increase to the tax levy due to new growth and how the shares are allocated. You'll see once again this year, there's very little that actually came from the industrial. The front runner is still personal property for us. This is showing you the change in the residential value between 2013 and 2014. You'll see that the single family has actually recovered a little bit, very little, but it still has gone up. The condos, unfortunately, are still kind of lagging. We actually did see another drop this year. But you will see that there's been a change in the two and three families, and the apartments over four and up, we actually saw an increase in the rents that were reported to us. And those are valued on an income basis, but we did see an actual rise this year. Basically, the purpose here is just to try to equalize the fiscal year 2014 rate and the value changes. And if you had a property that was valued in 2013 at $200,000, basically, the tax bill amount would have been $3,340 at the tax rate of $16.70. The total residential change was about .01% that it went up. So the equalized value for that property would now be $202,000. At the same tax bill amount, if you ran the numbers, the tax rate resulting without any of the other factors going on would be $16.68. So the first vote that we take is, the first vote that we're going to talk about is the one on the residential discount. The Board of Selectmen has the opportunity to vote up to a 20% discount to owner occupied and residential properties. This would shift the burden from the less expensive homes onto the higher-priced homes and the non-resident homes. It works mostly in communities that have a large amount of vacation homes or non-owner occupied properties to shift the burden onto. In a community like Auburn, basically, most of the properties we have here are all owner occupied, except for a smattering of two and three families. Basically, what would happen here is, rather than shift it onto those other properties that are non-owner occupied, what you would see it doing is actually making a shift between the below median houses and the above median houses, putting a burden on them. So it's very rare that you would see it in a community like this. The next vote is on the small commercial exemption. The town of Auburn has traditionally, for the past six years, voted to do a small commercial exemption. It has no effect on the residential and personal property rates. Industrial properties do not qualify for the exemption, but they do share in the tax burden for this. The exemption in this case goes to the property owner. It does not go to the businesses that occupy. It relies on a trickle-down effect that the landlords can afford to give rent concessions to their tenants. For multi-business properties, in order to qualify, each tenant that is on that property must have 10 or less employees. They have to all qualify. The value must be less than $1 million. Basically, the assessors have to go through the list of the businesses that is sent to us from the Department of Workforce Development and qualify each property individually by the businesses located there. Businesses that are not on the list to be qualified must be DBAs if we ought to qualify them. Small incorporated businesses must be on the list. Each year, any other properties that aren't on the list need to refile applications with the Board of Assessors. What we tend to do is mail applications out ahead of time to the people who received it in the previous year, and, you know, try to get our data gathered as quickly as we can. Because what basically can happen is applications that are taken after the hearing and not part of the processing before the tax rate is set with the recap, basically come out of the overlay, so it kind of defeats the purpose of the split. The Board of Selectmen have the ability to vote a factor of up to 10% for each of the qualifying businesses. Basically, just to give you an idea, what happens is, when you apply this exemption to the town of Auburn, the shift, what it does is it changes. We go from having two tax rates to, one tax rate, two tax rates, residential and a commercial industrial personal property, to a third one for the commercial industrial, and the personal property stays at the pure commercial rate. At a commercial industrial shift of 1.10, the difference is about nine cents a thousand, and as you get up to 1.30, it only changes by a penny. The difference is about 10 cents per thousand. So that would be the effect of the shift on the commercial industrial properties. Basically, when I did this chart, it does assume that there, the current shift of 1.25 and the current exemption of 10% that we voted last year. This is showing the various tax rates for the town of Auburn for 2014, based on the budget that was approved at town meeting. This year, if we shifted to a residential factor of one, which means an equal rate for both commercial industrial properties and residential properties, that rate would be 19.08. If we went through with 1.05, you would see the residential rate at $1,867, the commercial industrial rate at $20.03. Going through the scenario at the 1.25 that we're currently at, the rate for residential properties is $1,705, and the commercial industrial property rate would be $23.85. And going to like 1.40, which is up 15 from where we were, you would see the residential rate go down to $1,583, but the commercial rate would go up to $26.71 per thousand. The historic trend for the town, when I first came here back in 2006, we were at 1.62. For 2007, you start to see movement, the shift changed, it went to 1.58, stayed there for 2008, and then you'll see that it's gradually been shifting down through the years until we got to the 1.25 that we're at today. This is basically kind of just walking people through the effect that these tax rates have on the commercial industrial properties. Not so much on the residential ones, because they're not valued by income, but on the commercial properties, where it is an income approach to value, what they pay in taxes actually is going to affect what their bottom line value is, and actually affect not only what the tax rate for the town is, but it's going to affect what we actually receive in taxes from those properties. And you'll see that if you compare the same building in Auburn, the same building in Shrewsbury, Grafton and Worcester, and you run them through with last year's tax rates, the building in Auburn, which you'll see is, would end up, after you've adjusted everything, being valued at $285,262.50. That same building in Shrewsbury, because of the low tax rate, would be valued at $333,337.50. The appraised value in Grafton would be a little lower than Shrewsbury, but still substantially higher than Auburn. The good news is, you move that same building to Worcester, and the value would go down to $265,987.50. So, you know, basically, what we have to keep in mind is, when businesses are looking at Auburn to buy property, they're looking at the best return for their investment. And, you know, right now, the building that is affordable in Auburn is less affordable in, it's less affordable to run that building in Worcester, but still- in, it's less affordable to run that building in Worcester, but still substantially more affordable to own that building in Shrewsbury. This is just giving you an idea of the cost to do business in Worcester County based on the taxes in various towns. This is based on 2013 rates, and showing you as you run through the tax rates, you'll see Grafton is at 15.55, Milbury is at 16.48, which is much closer to us, Oxford is at 14.45, Lester is only $13.62 a thousand. The town of Starbridge is at 21.65, and you have Shrewsbury at $11.67 there. You can see that they're substantially lower on the chart. And then we have the city of Worcester at $30.85. So they are still the highest price to do business, and then Auburn was at 23.43 last This is running you through the impact of splitting the tax rate on the average property. And what I've done is I've chosen the average residential, the average commercial, and the average industrial. At a tax rate of one, with everybody having a tax rate of $19.08, your residential tax bill would be $4,187. Your commercial tax bill would be $21,278, and your industrial property would have a tax bill of $23,732. As you bring them through the various scenarios, you can see that by putting a rate of the 1.25, which is where we are now, the residential properties would be at $3,741. Commercial properties would be at $26,597 a year, and our industrial properties would be at $29,665 per year. And basically, what I've done here is reduce it kind of down to dollars or cents. At 1.25, I'm considering it neutral, which is where we are for the current, for the previous year. If we went to a factor of 1.20, the residential properties would be $90 more per year than they would be at the 1.25. Your, at a factor of 1.30, they would be $90 less than they are this year. 90%, yeah, $90. And changing the rate to one would increase the residential property value by $446. For the commercial properties, if we do, if we did a factor of 1.20, their bills would go down about $1,071. If we went to a 1.30, they would go up the same amount. At a factor of one, the average commercial building would save $5,331 a year in taxes. For the industrial properties, at a factor of the 1.2, they would save an additional $1,194. The industrial properties would, at a factor of one, would save $5,946. This chart is kind of a busy chart, but this is basically comparing everything that you, you know, in a, I split it up into five. So you have 1.25, which is where we are now, and then I went from 1.30 down to a rate of one. And what it's doing is it's showing that you, your average single-family house, if we left the rate at 1.25, your average single-family residential property would go up 2.42% this year, that their tax bill would be that much higher. For a condo, their value would increase by 1.31. Your two families would increase by 3.42, and your three families would go up by about 5.95% based on the revaluation of properties this year. Your commercial properties had the biggest increase valuation-wise, they did go up this year. Their values, if we left the shift at 1.25, would increase by 5.32%. Industrial properties, which lagged behind, would actually go down 1.38% this year. As you run through the various shifts that are available, you will see that if you went the next notch down by five, which has been tradition, you would see that the residential property would go up by 4.88%, your average single-family. Your condos would go up by 3.74. Your two-family would go up by 5.91. Your three-families would go up by 8.49. Your commercial would go up by 1.08. And your industrial properties would actually decline. Because I know there were a lot of questions, what I also did, there's a handout up here that actually breaks it down by the single numbers. If you went, I took the 1.25 we're at now, if they voted to go 1% down rather than a 5% notch, I also listed those out, so that is available. This is basically showing you over, up until 2013, the average tax bill for residential property in the town of Auburn. The average statewide is $4,846. The average tax bill in Auburn is still at $3,653. So the average taxpayer here is paying about $1,200 less than they are in most parts of And just as a note, our commercial, industrial rate is the 68th highest in the state. It is down from 57% in 2013. So we're now in the top one-fifth of the state as far as the rate, but we are going down. This is just kind of giving you an idea what's happened with the home values in Auburn. And basically, going back to the 19, late 1980s, you'll see that we had some rises, then we had a leveling off and a small decline. And then what you're going to see is 2006, 2007, and 2008, we had a large rise in those properties. You can see where those values have declined, and then the last year, they were pretty much flat. So we haven't, we have started, I think, this year maybe to see the recovery, the sales for the second half of this year indicate there's a rise, but as of the date of valuation this year, those residential values were very flat. The one thing which is promising is this is through October, what we've had for this year for foreclosure sales. And you can see that we've had, it's been spiking up and down. It ended up last year, it was slightly up from the previous year, but this year, to where we were last year, that number is down, we've had 17 to date, and I think I redid those numbers probably about the end of October. So it's a promising sign, there are less foreclosures out there. These foreclosures are not just residential properties, they're also commercial, industrial properties. So it's a promising sign that we see less of those. This is just a sample of what the Board of Selectmen is going to vote this year. It brings you through the various numbers. They vote on, number one, that residential factor that splits the rate. The second one is to grant an open space discount, and somehow I skipped that slide, I apologize. Then the residential exemption is number three. Then the fourth vote is going to be the small, commercial exemption, and the percentage if they wish to give that. When you get to the second page of this form, basically, there is a number on here that you will see that's circled. That is the amount of excess levy capacity that the town has. So you can see that we're levying a considerable amount below what we are allowed to. We are leaving $2,944,000 as excess levy capacity, and that number is disclosed to the Board of Selectmen as part of this hearing. This is a chart that was presented by Mr. Kasnovich at the town meeting, and basically, what it's showing you is what we have done over the years as far as the excess levy capacity. From fiscal year 2010, where we had $350,552, you can see that each year we have put a substantial amount in to get up to where we are for this year at 2014. And, do you want to explain this one, Ed?
If I may, I'll take over from here. Thank you, Cindy. We also presented this overhead at town meeting as well, and this relates to the previous overhead that Cindy just talked about. If you can go back to the other slide, Cindy?
Yep, I think.
As a community, or any community in Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we're allowed to tax at a 2.5% over the prior year levy limit. And there was a strategy put in place to address the split tax rate. So we were trying to offer the residential taxpayers some relief by not taxing to 2.5, and that's translated into savings over the past five years. In most cases since 2009, we have not taxed 2.5. It will show you the level of taxation in those yellow boxes. We roughly charged, or raised through taxation in 2011, 37% of 2.5%. That's slightly below 1%. The following year, we taxed at a rate of 31.36% of a total 2.5%, or roughly 3/4 of 1%, significantly down. The following year, we actually taxed less than we did the year before. We took, that is actually a reduction, but it's represented as a 0% of the allowable tax levy for that year. In the current year that we're in, and this was prepared at a town meeting, and it's slightly different than Cindy's, excess levy is reported at $2,944,000. We'd be taxing at a levy of 1.11% of possible 2.5. That's roughly 45.62%. Cindy, the next screen. As a result of that, we've put in analytical form the savings realized to the taxpayer, residential taxpayer, commercial taxpayer, and industrial taxpayer if we were to tax at 2.5%. We stated at town meeting, you can look at a number of communities that surround central Massachusetts, most of them are taxing at 2.5%. We are not. That's resulted in, over the four-year period, to the average residential taxpayer in Auburn with a value of $220,000, total savings of $660. For the commercial taxpayer with an assessed value of roughly 1.1 million, we saved that commercial taxpayer roughly $5,340 over that four-year period. And the industrial taxpayer with a value of 1.244 million, we saved roughly about, just shy of $6,000 over that period of time as well.
And the final slide is just running you through what the various shifts would be, what the tax rate would be depending on the factor that is chosen by the Board of Selectmen. The budget has been set at town meeting, and the tax rates could shift slightly as we go through the recap process, but they're very close to where they would be. And basically, what you'll see right now, we're at the 1.25%, which would bring us to the 17.05 for the residential, and 23.85. And as I say, the Board of Selectmen choose this number, it can be any, it can be in increments of one, it can be in increments of five, and these are just the tax rates that we would have.
Is that it for your presentation? Is that it for your presentation?
Yes, that's it.
Do board members have any questions at this point? Mr. Simone and then Mr. Holstrom?
I have one right now. And this was, hopefully I got all of it. This was a resident that caught me after town meeting and asked me to please ask this question during the tax classification. So, the question there, dissertation, I guess, is, the main selling point for closing the tax rate is that as businesses are populated, more money would be coming into the tax base. Eventually, there would be a point where residential taxes would decrease, or there would be some sort of break for the residents. However, it seems that would only work if the town budget remained the same year over year. If the budget continues to increase, then it also seems that the discussed tax break for residents remains a brass ring we can never quite get our hands on. So that is their question, that if, as we close the tax rate, and we, and more businesses have come to Auburn as a result, which we've seen, we've seen the growth, I guess what their question was is, you know, we've always talked about eventually, that businesses bring more money into the tax base, there would be some break-even point for the residents, or even, you know, a, the benefit to them would be that they would pay less or whatever. So this person's feeling is that if the budget continues to increase, there, it's still going to increase no matter what. So hopefully, I got that the way it was asked.
Yeah, well, if I may respond, I think we put up a slide that shows that we try to mitigate that by not taxing at 2.5. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts allows you to tax at a 2.5% value greater than the previous fiscal year based upon your levy limit. And as I stated earlier, most communities are taxing at 2.5%. We are not. So we have saved our residents money, real dollars, over the past four years. We're trying to limit the rate of growth, we have addressed that, and it was part of a long-term plan to ultimately generate some new growth in the commercial, industrial sector of Auburn that is ultimately going to offer our residents some long-term relief, because that new growth by businesses coming into the community is not money that we're taxing our residents. As you know, new growth is a separate component outside of 2.5. So that new growth allows additional dollars to be spent on the operational side of the budget in support of those services required to maintain a healthy and stable community for our businesses as well as our residents.
Okay, I have no follow-up. Hopefully.
Mr. Holstrom?
Yeah. A question through the chair to, to Mr. Kasnovich or Cindy, we'll have, I had a chance to take a look at some of the figures here in front of us, and goes back to 2009 up to this year, 2013, and it appears that the residents have paid cumulative over those course of years almost $1,800 in taxes, whereas the average small business, about the same, $250,000 we're talking, they've paid less than, they've paid the minus $1,800. So it seems as though the tax burden has gone to the resident, and a lot of concerns I've had by residents is that the taxes are going up, and yes, we all understand they are going up because costs are going up. But is there a way that we can take a look at this and help benefit the residents? I guess my question is, what if we do nothing? Where do we, where will we be?
At 1.25, if we do nothing, the average residential homeowner with a value of, is pegged at $220,000, the taxes would rise by a rate of 2.42% if you remain at 1.25. The average small business owner, whose rates have increased, or value has increased from last year to this fiscal year by a rate of roughly 5% to 7%, are going to realize a much greater increase because the value of their business has grown greater than the residential. As Cindy indicated, the residential properties basically remain flat, commercial has increased by an average rate of 5% to 7%. As a result of that, their taxes will go up based on a factor of 1.25, roughly 8%. So as you can see, the trend has now shifted. The commercial and industrial, as a result of that factor change by a factor of five over the last three years, have actually realized a reduction while the residential has realized an increase. And that's part of, by moving that factor, there's an automatic shift to the residential property. I think last year's calculation, by a shift of factor of five, it automatically increased the residential homeowner's taxes by about 2.5% on top of an increase as a result of a number of factors. One factor being, for instance, the Lowe's property. Several years ago, that property was listed with a value on the books of roughly $15 million. Today, that value is pegged at 3.4 million, Cindy? Today, that value is pegged at 3.4 million Cindy?
I think it's.
That value change automatically means that that loss is distributed throughout the other property classes. So, we have to raise the same amount of dollars, but it comes at the expense of those other property classes.
Well, I think just as a follow-up, just a comment to the residents, they have been paying the taxes and you know what? We are getting services, the town has improved. We've made some leaps and bounds in the past two to three years that we have not seen probably in the past 10 to 15 years. And I guess that turns over to the town manager and routine for what improvements have been made. What I would like to see at some point is to have probably some officials from the town to get together and take a look at the taxes for the residents and see what kind of abatements, what kind of benefits, what kind of relief we can get for them and possibly, you know, put some members together and take a look at this for down the road. Thank you.
Mr. Grossman.
Yes, Mr. Simone, you made some comments by a resident who made a town meeting asking about the taxes increasing and why. Without doing anything, we just heard the taxes will increase by a little over 2%. Figured we gave, if we stayed at the same rate that we're at now. We need to continue, as bad as it hurts us, we still need to continue to go on the trend that we've been going. Maybe not necessarily the full five points, but we need to continue to move towards that single tax rate, the direction that we've taken five or six years ago. It has helped. We see the results on the businesses becoming, coming in, being more stable, staying. And we need to continue that trend.
Do board members have any other questions?
I have a question, I don't know that you'll be able to answer it. You probably don't have the data to answer this, even if you can give your opinion on the answer. We talk about doing the cost of business in Auburn compared to other communities. So, since it was in our packet, I'll use Shrewsbury as an example. We just said that, you know, the commercial properties here in Auburn are enjoying the benefits of not taxing to the 2.5% here. So, if you, and you use the example of a $1 million commercial building. If you took this, took a $1 million commercial building and you cited it in Shrewsbury, I would believe that the assessed value would be much greater. Now you look, you turn and you look at the tax rate. If, if you based their tax bill on the full 2.5% which they taxed to and an outside override, do you still believe that doing the cost of business in Shrewsbury is far less than Auburn?
Right now, with their tax rate, it would be a substantial override. You would have to add a considerable amount. You know, it's very difficult when you compare a town like Shrews because the values are so different. The makeup of the commercial tax base there is much different than ours. They do not have a mall. But on the other hand, they have several extremely large office buildings. They have some industrial, large industrial properties. They have some actual office research-type buildings. They have, they have some higher-end type things than we do. To compete with them at the tax rate they're at now, it would, I mean, it would take a considerable override to really catch.
And that's taking into consideration the fact that they're taxing at 2.5% and most other communities are?
The only thing I will say is with them taxing at 2.5% and the town of Auburn continuing the trend they are now, eventually they will catch up to us. It may be years, but they will catch up to us. Most communities around here, you'll find are taxing to the max. One thing which is kind of promising is communities like Auburn that are starting to build up this excess levy capacity. And we're not taxing to the max. If you look through the bond ratings of those associated towns, they're considerably higher. They're the better rated towns, basically where we're looking to go. So, it's a promising thing that we're not doing it, but still to compare the tax rates and try to equalize the values, it'll take a few years of taxing at the max for them to catch us.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up to public comment now. When you come up, please give your name and address for the record. And is there someone who wants to go first?
Hello, everybody. My name is Amar Kapoor. I'm president of Aimtech and Atech Corporation, and which is both here in Auburn. One is on 201 Washington Street and the other one is on 1 St. Mark Street. So, I've had this business for a number of years. And I said, you know, my goal is since, unless, until you folks go to a single tax rate, you will see me show up here every year. I am determined to see that you do the right thing, which you have been in the past doing it. And you can just see how business is flourishing around in certain communities. And Auburn, certainly I would like to hope to be one of them, you know. Just want to give you an idea, you know. Last year, I came here and I said 5% of our business comes from Massachusetts. And a good part of that was from Auburn. This year, none of our business comes from Auburn. And only 3% of our business comes from Massachusetts. And 97% of our business comes from other parts, of which, 1/3 of our business comes from international customers. I made it a point to go out and get business on an international basis because I wanted to keep the employment higher here, bring our export dollars basically into USA and to our Auburn community. We have not laid off any people. And I come here to urge and beg that you listen to businesses like us and make it affordable to operate from Auburn. I, you know, we attend a number of trade shows and I've been, I can't tell you how much I've been bombarded by other states, not other communities, other states. You know, like North Carolina, like Texas. And we are going to expand. And I hope you give us the incentive to expand here in Auburn. So, I urge that you consider Auburn for a single tax rate. Because if businesses come here, you will see more of dollars coming in. And which will help, I'm sure will help the residential tax rate, will help the commercial tax rate, and Auburn will be able to give services they provide at a budget that is reasonable, you know. So, I urge, basically, to go for the single tax rate. You've been doing that, which is very good, which is very helpful, gives me hope, encourages me and businesses like mine which are over here, and to bring more of the revenues from international customers into our USA and then into our community here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Mr. Sarkisian?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name, for the record, is Mark Sarkisian Jr. I'm here speaking tonight representing the Auburn Chamber of Commerce as well as the president of Capital Siding Company. And it's also important to know that I own residential properties here in town. So, I can appreciate both sides of this issue. Over the past eight years, the Auburn Board of Selectmen have taken steps to reduce the business tax rate from the 2006 differential of 1.62 to the present rate of 1.25. We believe that collectively, our goal should get Auburn back to a single tax rate. Auburn's population is 16,200. But during the day, it doubles to 32,000. This nearly doubled amount are those individuals who work in or visit Auburn every day and who spend money here. And many of these businesses also employ Auburn residences. With the exception of Worcester, Auburn employs the largest number of people in central Massachusetts. Auburn has gained a more positive business image a result of the Board of Selectmen's lowering the business tax rate over the past several years and should be commended for that. We have experienced new business development, growth, and expansion due directly to that fact. For example, the move of Outback Steakhouse to the old Abdouse Building. And the Ethan Allen Building, that will now be a fitness center with more retail space. Both have become an eyesore in this town. Also, the Connecticut Business System, the RH White Expansion, ERA Key Realty, Diamond Auto Group, Subway, Interstate Ten Transmission, and the list goes on and on. This is why we need to continue to work towards a single tax rate in Auburn. We are the only town in the immediate area besides Worcester that has a single tax rate. Why? I don't know. Last week, the Worcester Business Journal published property taxes in Massachusetts. And Auburn's commercial rate is ranked 13th highest out of a total of 83 towns as they listed. The only city or town within a 20-mile radius of Auburn was Worcester. We have made tremendous progress in bringing businesses back to Auburn, but we are still not there yet. I am asking the Board of Selectmen not only to keep the small business tax exemption, but also to lower the tax rate on businesses from 1.25 to 1.15. We need to be at a single rate. We've been doing this for seven years and we're seeing the benefits of your hard work. This is not an easy choice to make, but it's the right choice. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
Good evening. Brian LaFort with Polar Beverages, 26 Southbridge Street in Worcester. And I want to go through this page by page, so, no, I'm only kidding. I'll keep this short. I second everything that the previous two speakers said. And I urge the Board to go with the lowest possible rate. The 1.15 would be good. And everyone needs to keep their eye on the ball and that is new growth and attracting new businesses. There's still lots of undeveloped commercial land and underused commercial properties that will produce more revenue, can produce more tax revenue if businesses choose to come here and do business. When I look at businesses, without naming anyone, businesses that moved to Sutton, moved to Millbury, and Grafton, all with that low single rate, there's a reason it happens. So, I said I'd be brief, that's it. Good night, thank you.
Thank you. Next, oh, this one, okay.
My name is Dick Taylor, here from Masterman's. I'm going to be brief also. I appreciate what you've been doing, we do as a company. I think it's been going in the right direction for quite a while and management of the town has gotten much better. Sword Street has never looked so good and I appreciate that. But Ben Masterman passed away this summer and the first thing people wanted to know was, are we going to sell? And there are a lot of people that look to buy us on a regular basis. They want our list of customers, not necessarily our building or the people that are working here. We absolutely are committed to staying in the town. We want to continue to support it. And we hope that you're able to support the town as well by continuing with the lower rates. Thank you.
Thank you. This gentleman in the front row.
Good evening, my name is Vinnie Berga. I'm with Big Bob's or Floris Day up 470 Southbridge Street. I actually have a question. Cindy, what happens when a property is empty? What is the tax value that you get if it's a commercial property?
During the revaluation process, we are supposed to look at market. If we have a property that is particularly blighted, we are forced at some point to go below what's the market vacancy and reflect that. So, those vacant properties do go below.
So, you get a much lower tax?
We do, yes.
Now, versus a prop, residential property that's not owned, you're going to be at the assessed value? It's a different formula, it's not based off the rent?
The residential properties are not based on rents. They are based on, on, you know, market.
Terrific. And I'm sorry, Ken, if I could ask you a question. Were you saying that the average business cost comparative was 250,000 compared to 250,000?
For the small businesses, yes.
Okay. Now, the average commercial business, is it $1,330,000 that's listed on here?
That is the average. If I take the total number of commercial properties divided by the, and divided into the total value, that is the average value that I get.
Terrific. I want to tell you, as a small business owner, who actually, we started our business in Auburn in large part because of Julie and the people here at the town did a fantastic job of making it an exciting environment for us. We now presently employ probably 80 people across Massachusetts working in our business. One of the reasons why we almost didn't come here was your tax rate. And it took a lot of arm twisting and hand-holding and convincing that you were going to go towards a single rate, not that there was a promise, but an intent, to get us to come here. And I have to tell you, we have five locations now, two years later, and we pay the highest taxes in Auburn, by far. Almost three times as much compared to some of our buildings, which are similar in size and scope and do less volume. So, as a business, I would urge you not to go to 1.15, but you need to get to a single rate. The sooner you do it, the better. You're driving businesses away. And I talk to other business owners who talk about where they should be and I promise you, they look at tax rate. It's a critical issue. Unfortunately, I think a lot of times resident owners are looking at their tax rates and they look for businesses to subsidize it. But it's a very different environment for businesses. There are many things that the town offers that a business does not pull on, that the residents do. And we bring a lot of people into the town to spend money, invest, and live. So, I would really love to encourage you to do the right thing and the sooner we can get to a single tax rate, the better. There are way too many vacancies up and down the road that I pass every day and I'm sure you see them as well as I do. And I think if you can get that rate down quickly, we're going to be able to accelerate growth. And then these properties that you're getting no money from or little money from will actually be able to pay their fair share. And I think that will help towards the issue that several consumers were asking you about because those properties aren't carrying any kind of tax value like they could or should if they're rented at a market rate. So, thank you very much for the time. I hope you do the right thing.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Kevin Ladner with 28 to 30 Sword Street Associates. Again, I want to thank the Board for over the past eight years reducing that rate. I think that's, that's been very helpful. And I kind of want to reiterate it, what everybody else has been saying, that a single tax rate is really where we need to get to. 10 years ago, you didn't have towns that had great access to the highway systems. Auburn had a special place there, you know, 290 Mass Pike, 146. Now, you've got Millbury, you've got huge interchange. You've got Grafton that has Mass Pike.
I'm sorry, could you just move closer to the microphone?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Members can't hear you.
You've got Grafton with the.
You can, you can pull it up towards you if you need to.
Grafton has a Mass Pike access as well, so. It's not, you don't have that special place in this area anymore. So, as a business owners that rent to people, trying to attract people to our properties, we really need that extra kick. And tax rate is a big, big factor in that, attracting those tenants. So, I urge you to get the tax rate down as low as you can go. It's pretty important to us, so, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak? In the back, please. In the back, please.
Good evening. My name's Chris Bastian, General Manager at the Auburn Mall. I may probably be the briefest yet, just echoing everything that's been said, but certainly our tenants appreciate the move towards a single tax rate. Their success and their longevity with us is certainly directly tied to that in many ways. Lower tax rate also helps us to attract more and better retailers to the mall, which, again, leads to the ultimate success of the mall and hopefully be a continued, you know, strong business in Auburn for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. In the back, Mr. Page.
Good evening. I'm sorry I wasn't here early to hear the whole thing, but as usual, I come up here every year saying to keep the tax rate the way it is or give the residents the tax rate because I think, you know, we're in hard times, and we're still in hard times, and, you know, regular citizens and public in town can't get all these exemptions and stuff that businesses do, write-offs and everything else. People have to worry, seniors have to worry about food, medication, and then you want to tax them. You raise their taxes, they have to move out, they have to move in with their daughters, sons, and it's hard for both at this point in time. So, I'm not knocking the businesses for coming up here and saying what they had to say. I agree to them with a point. I think it's about time that we have a couple of years of level funding and tax rate because in the last month or so, I've seen many things, including town meeting, where we're just walking around spending money here, there, and everywhere. New town vehicles that we never had before. We're getting all brand-new vehicles for department heads and everything else, and the taxpayers are going to keep paying and paying and paying. It's about time this board gets back to helping the people instead of what you've been previously doing. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak? No one else? Before I close it for public comment, if I could hear from Town Administration at this point?
Certainly. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to listen to all the speakers and just address a couple of points that were made. First of all, I just want to assure the Board of Selectmen and the residents, as well as the business community, all taxpayers, that Town Administration will continue with its conservative fiscal management practices. Not only are we not taxing to 2.5%, as Ed Kozinovich said, but we are well below that at 1.14. And I just want to point out a couple of things that we did point out at town meeting that shows that we have been on the right track. We have increased our funds into infrastructure and roads. I know there was a comment made on one of the roads, but we have done several roads. We're over $3.5 million worth of roads. We've increased our stabilization fund. We've increased our free cash up to nearly $4 million. We've increased our excess levy, as you saw the slide earlier. We've established and increased an OPEB fund to start addressing our liability on the OPEB side that I would say less than a handful of communities in the state have actually started to do this. And we've increased our reserves, all of which are good for our bond rating. The town has made these changes, and we will continue to make reforms to those cost centers that actually drive up our costs, to the question that Mr. Simoniun was given after town meeting. We do have fixed costs that continue to rise, and we're doing everything we can to constrain those costs and to address them, particularly in the area of healthcare. I just want to point out that in the last fiscal year, we saved $1.1 million on healthcare reform changes, and due to agreements with all of the unions, we're moving forward, going to be saving $569,000 annually every year thereafter. Our financial policies that the Board of Selectmen, this Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee adopted have been implemented by Town Administration. Those continue to guide our direction in how we prepare the budget. We will continue to use those excess revenues and other means of reforms to reduce the tax rate for the residents and to make the right decisions that benefit all taxpayers, businesses, and residents alike. Just one quick follow-up question regarding town meeting. Our financial policies, they are in place, they've been in place for a year now, and one of those financial policies, which I think makes a world of sense regarding the purchase of vehicles that was mentioned, is it's important to start purchasing those vehicles using operating funds and tax levy as opposed to borrowing for those vehicles and having to incur the additional debt service costs that come with that borrowing. So, it was a policy of the Board and a policy of the Financial Committee to put a certain percentage of our revenues every year, I believe it's 0.25%, which is about $87,000 this year toward capital improvements, which is why we are allowed to purchase those vehicles, actually none of which were for department heads, but they actually are for vehicles that are aging in our fleet. If we don't maintain our fleet and we don't maintain public safety vehicles for response purposes, we will have a serious problem, if not liability, on the public safety end of it. So, I just want to, once again, reiterate, first of all, we're happy to work with the business community. It's been a pleasure. We've implemented some programs and policies in place that we hope will continue to help the business community, and at the same time, we're working with the residents to try to provide a quality of life for the residents. We've increased community programs, we've increased a number of events, and we've increased a number of services that we can provide to the residents while trying to keep a cap on those costs. So, I want to thank the Board for the opportunity to respond to this, and I look forward to the debate on the classification rate. Thank you.
I'll hear from members next. Does anyone want to speak? If there's no discussion, we need to take votes on... Mr. Simoniun, yes?
Either now or when I make the motion for the tax rate. For the time that I've been on this board, I've been part of this discussion now for this would be the fourth time, and I understand the benefit that we've had of shifting the tax rate back in the direction of a single tax rate. There's, anyone who watches this meeting every year, listens to the presentation, understands that this is a fairly complicated and complex thing. So, before I continue, there is one thing that I want to make sure that I mention this year because I've had the opportunity four years in a row to sit down with Cindy and have this discussion prior to this presentation. And though I came into this with some level of understanding, that level has grown over the four years, and every year I have the same question because I always forget one thing, and she always answers it for me. And, you know, I do appreciate the time that she spends with offers to all the members of the Board to sit down and have this discussion every year so that we have the opportunity to truly understand all of the factors that go into what we're doing here tonight. The balance is always, for me, trying to do the best for the town as a whole, the voters that I'm beholden to, and part of that is improving business here, improving the climate to bring businesses here. And I know that's a tough conversation to have sometimes, especially in the economy that we've had. That said, I am in favor of continuing to move in that direction. I've listened to all the business owners, I've listened to the residents and the comments that have been made over the years, and I just... For me, this year, I'm not so sure that going... I certainly understand the argument that's being made for the 1.15, even the 1.2. All things considered, and some of the things for me that certainly are and will impact the residents of this town, the taxpayers, we still have the debt exclusion for the high school. We have the Bay Path cost. Next year, we'll pick up the cost of the debt exclusion for the middle school, and on top of that, the tax increase that was passed at the state level this year. So, while I'm in favor of continuing to move towards the single tax rate, this year, I feel a little more cautious, and I would certainly support 1.23, possibly 1.22. I don't know that I would feel comfortable right now not knowing what we're going to incur in the next year. So, that's my thought, my feelings on this for this year.
Is there anyone else who wants... Mr. Grossman?
Just briefly add to what Mr. Simoniun's comments were. Yes, we are facing a lot of increases coming up with building a new middle school, Bay Path expansion and renovation, which is not in the figures yet. It's going to be harder after this year for a couple of years than this year is. And if we're going to do what we should do as much as we can in this fiscal year rather than holding back till next year. So, I would hope that the Board would go to 1.2.
Anyone else? I'll just make a brief comment. You know, we went to the split rate in 1983 when I first was elected to this board, and we discussed the tax rate. I've said over and over again, it's going to take many years. This isn't going to happen overnight. To go to, as suggested, while I appreciate the 1.15 it was mentioned, please go to a single tax rate, that would be devastating to the homeowners in Auburn. I mean, I can't even imagine how many people would lose their homes if we went to a single tax rate in one night just with the vote of a five-member board. It would be devastating to the homeowners. We are moving in the right direction. We will continue, I believe, to reduce the tax rate. What I didn't hear from anyone tonight of the business owners is Auburn is a good place to do business in. I hear it all the time, yet we didn't say it tonight at the tax classification hearing. Town Administration is professional, easy to work with. The boards and commissions that you go before have been polite and respectful, and Auburn is a good community to do business in. It's not just a location, it's a community as a whole, and I hope you'll continue to appreciate that. But right now, I would agree with, I'm not sure where the entire Board is, but I looked at these numbers, and I personally couldn't go more than the 1.23. I think anything more than that would be devastating to the residents. Is there any other comment from Board members? I'll entertain a motion regarding the selection of the residential factor.
We have to close it.
We have to close it before setting the rate? Okay. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak before I close the hearing? I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. The hearing is now closed. So, we have four votes that need to be taken. The first would be on the selection of the residential factor. Is there a motion?
I move that we move the residential factor to 1.22.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Mr. Holstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Brotherton?
Yes.
Mr. Simoniun?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes.
And the chair votes no. Is there a motion regarding the open space discount?
Motion disallow.
I'm sorry.
Motion disallow the option.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. So, there's a motion and a second to disallow the open space discount. Where are we at on that right now, Ms. Cosgrove?
We do not currently classify anything as open space, so that would be the correct vote.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Holstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Brotherton?
Yes.
Mr. Simoniun?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. On the residential exemption, this is the, if you can just...
This is the exemption that it's used in a lot of towns, resort-type towns. It splits the value between the residential classes. Auburn really does not have homes that aren't owned or occupied, so it really does not apply to us.
Is there a motion?
Motion not to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Holstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Brotherton?
Yes.
Mr. Simoniun?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And the small commercial discount.
We have traditionally been doing this at 10%.
Motion to continue to adopt the small commercial exemption at 10%.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Mr. Holstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Brotherton?
Yes.
Mr. Simoniun?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Can I... Go ahead, Mrs. Simoniun.
I'd like to move that this board has Town Management to revisit the budget and find a way to absorb what I believe, if my math is correct, would be $456,000 burden to the residents for the tax shift from 1.25 to 1.22.
Is there a second?
For discussion.
We're into discussion.
Okay. Based on, and if my math is incorrect, through the chair, Mr. Kozinovich, Ms. Cosgrove, based on the numbers that we discussed, roughly 0.05 would be $760,000. So, if I divide that by five, I get 0.01 would be about $150,000. So, 0.03 seems to be $456,000, which if we absorb that into the budget, there would be no increase on the residents due to the shift in the tax rate. So, and through the chair, Ms. Holstrom, the conversation that you brought up before, I agree with. This was part of the discussion that I had when I sat down with Mr. Kozinovich and Ms. Cosgrove. You know, this is a direct way to help the residents because it kind of gives us the benefit of both worlds. We're moving, continuing to move closer to the single tax rate while at the same time finding a way to absorb that burden so that it doesn't fall on the residents. Ms. Cosgrove also mentioned to me, and I wanted to bring this up because during the discussion, she felt that there weren't enough people who understood there are things that are available to residents. I'm not going to speak to that because she's much more well-versed, but she did indicate to me that there are ways the town could work with residents, and I certainly would, you know, anyone who wants to have that discussion, I encourage you to do so. But that's the reason for my motion, and I'll leave it up to the Board.
We're into discussion. Does anyone want to comment? Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair to Town Administration. Can you address his comments and where we should be, and is that a plausible...
Sure, to the chair. Quite honestly, if there were a suggestion of reducing the budget, that should have taken place before the fall town meeting. That was the time to address any adjustment to the budget. Right now, we're in the bottom of the ninth inning, two outs, 3-2 count. We wouldn't be able to set a tax rate. We'd have to go back to town meeting to reduce the budget by a value as being suggested, the amount of 450-some-odd thousand dollars. That requires a town meeting vote, not to mention where that would come from, what services that would impact. But this Board, if you recall, you supported funding articles for money that went into stabilization in other accounts that a recommendation was made to town meeting, which they acted on. So, we would have to go back to town meeting. We wouldn't be able to send out through a quota tax bill, so we'd have to hold off.
Thank you.
The only other comment I have is, you know, this is news to me, brought it up last year and wasn't mentioned. That said, we found creative ways through... That said, we found creative ways through grants to fund other things and it just seems like we're just kind of dropping back and plunking. But I'll abide by the wishes of the board.
If I could also add in, just to be clear, after the May Town meeting, we did come back at Fall Town meeting with recommendations, the equivalent of about $1 million worth of funds that were put into various reserve accounts, stabilization, increases in roads. Those were the priorities that were expressed to us by this board as well as by town meeting, and those were funded. So, we will continue to make savings. If that had been the intent of the board prior to that, we may not have made the recommendations for those particular costs, some of which we would have made anyway because I think they're smart business practices in fiscal management, especially with relationship, with relation to increasing our bond rating. But that being said, we, as Mr. Kaznovich said, we would have needed to know this before we made our recommendations to town meeting.
I can't support the motion. I think that, you know, we just took a vote regarding the commercial and residential tax rate. It does affect the residents, and we have to stand behind our votes. So, I'll call for Mr. Simonian.
There is nothing that says we can't do both.
We've already sent the budget to town meeting. We can give guidance for future budgets. We can give guidance for future budgets, but this year's budget is, has already been voted on by town meeting.
In my experience, there's always a way to put, let's call them...
Well, it may be a future agenda item then. So, we have a motion. Is there, and a second? I'll call the roll. Mr. Holstrom?
No.
Mrs. Brotherton?
No.
Mr. Simonian?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?
No.
And the chair votes no. May I have a motion for a two-minute recess, please?
Can I? I've got one more for an issue here.
Okay.
I'd like to do that. I'd like to make a motion to establish a working group to review the existing criteria for real estate exemptions. The purpose of the group would be to recommend local options which could be adopted, to offer additional property tax relief to those in need of assistance for the next annual town meeting warrant.
Is there a second? Under discussion, do you have a proposal of where this working group, this working group members would come from?
Yeah, the panel would consist of a member of the Board of Selectment, and I would step up to be part of that. The town manager, the chief financial officer, the chief assessor, member of the finance committee, and two residents-at-large.
Is there any further discussion, other comments or questions?
Yeah, I guess if it's adopted, what would be the selection process for two residents-at-large?
Did you have a recommendation? I know...
No, I think that just to find out interested parties and...
Under the chatter, who would appoint, make those appointments? That would be the manager?
Through the chair. If this is a committee that the board is developing, then, and it's a committee that the board is putting into place, then the board would make those appointments.
It would have to be a working group because when one resident's, it would be a committee.
That's true. Through the chair, and Mr. Kaznovich just reminded me, if the board wants a group like that to be put together, it would have to be classified as a working group versus a committee because there are members of town administration that are not residents, so you don't want it to be a committee where you're only appointing residents. So, you want it to be a working group.
Okay.
And to take that a step further, if you're putting together a group to come up with short-term recommendations, then that group is going to dissolve after they bring those recommendations back to the board. Then it generally is a group more than a committee.
Okay. Then I'll make that, instead of the committee, make it a working group.
A second? Yeah, second. Mr. Holstrom, could I ask you? I'd just hold this item to the next meeting. Would you be willing to do that?
Absolutely.
We just haven't had...
Absolutely.
Give us time to look into it, look into the chatter, see what type we would have. So, you withdraw your motion?
Fine, I withdraw the motion.
You withdraw your second? Can I ask from...
Recession, some move, second.
Thank you. Call this meeting back to order. The next item we have is communications. We have none. Under Board of Selectment items, general items, we have medical marijuana facilities. At our last meeting, we had a presentation, several, a couple of presentations, and at that time, the timeline for the medical marijuana facilities was explained, and the proposers had asked the board to take a position. The board can take, choose to send a letter of support, we can send a letter of no opposition, or the board can take no action at this time. Mr. Holstrom?
Yes, we were here for that, the presentation of the two. And there is, I had a chance to review some of the information for the new law that's been passed, and it's moving forward, and it's not only in Auburn, it's all over. So, what I would like to do, not knowing enough about all the ins and outs about this, I would like to support taking no action at this time and sending it to the zoning board of appeals for them, for their review so that they can further research this and make a decision.
Second.
Is there discussion? Mr. Simonian?
Yeah, I understand, I understand the point Mr. Holstrom made, and I guess before I vote on this, the question I have is after, if we send it to the zoning board, will it ultimately come back to us for, for another vote as far as opposition?
I don't believe, I believe the timeline wouldn't allow it, that we were explaining the timeline at the last meeting. Am I correct?
Yeah, through the chair. I, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Holstrom, if an applicant were to come to the town and want to do this type of facility, they would have to submit an application to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit. So, that is a discretionary permit under the jurisdiction of the ZBA alone. They, it is my understanding they have not submitted any such application at this point. So, I believe if Mr. Holstrom's motion is to send it to the ZBA for their deliberation and comment on whether they want to support this, or is it to wait and let the ZBA take action on the item if and when an application is presented to them?
Mr. Simonian?
Then I don't support the motion to take no action, and the reason is this. Given the discussion that we had here last time, the additional information that was sent to me, what I read, the law is the law, and whether any of us agree with it or disagree with it, there's no consequence at this point. But for me, one of the issues that I kept running up against in what I read in some of the brief discussions I was able to have is that there, my issue is with the regulation. I know that Chief Slukis raised some points about concerns in the community. Some of those I certainly understand, and to a degree, I agree with some of the points that he raised. But if you look at other businesses, you know, banks are a great example. We have a lot of those here in Auburn, and the regulatory nature for bank, I mean, it's insane, the amount of regulations that they have to have and the hoops that they have to jump through just to operate on a daily basis. And a lot of those stem from fraud and, you know, money being lost of people who invest and things of those natures. So, I think that's a great thing. But there seems to be, at least from what I was able to get my hands on and digest since our last meeting, the regulatory nature of this business just doesn't seem to be there. And that's what, I guess that's what bothers me the most, for lack of a better term. And that is why, if I'm asked to vote on this tonight, I would, it would be to oppose it only because I can't seem to get straight answers and valid answers as far as the regulatory nature of this business. And to bring it into the community without specific answers to those, to the regulatory nature of it, that's just, I can't do that to the residents of this town without having the answers to those questions. So, I do understand the points through the chair, Mr. Holstrom made, to take no position, but I will be opposed to it at this time.
Does anyone else have anything to add? So, the motion and the second is to take no action.
Take no position.
Take...
Take no action, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Simonian. The next item we have is a transient vendor license for Loop to Go at the Auburn Mall. Is the applicant here? If you could come up to the microphone, please. Give your name and address for the record and...
Leo Karkoulis, 254 Mitchell G. Drive, took screen mask.
And you were before us in the past, and board members had additional questions. I'm hoping you have those answers. Does, who wants to go first with questions? Mr. Holstrom?
One of the questions and one of the concerns I had, I spoke to the water department after we had this meeting last time, as to the aquifer, you're going to be right in the middle of it. You've got water all around the Auburn Mall, and the runoff is a great concern to the waterways in Auburn and also to the sewers. I just want to be sure that that's being addressed and that you have the permits in place for that type of thing.
The system that we use, the steam car wash, doesn't have much, much water runoff anyway. We have a containment mat which we use to collect the water if there is any runoff from the car. Compared to a regular car wash or a power washer, they use five gallons of water. We use less than one gallon of water per car. So, it's all pretty much steam that comes out. It's, there's no water residue that comes off the car. And we have a containment mat which collects that water.
And along to follow up with that, there could be some hazardous material there. I mean, you're going to be washing oils, tars, that type of thing off into the mat. Have you got hazardous materials or a hazardous waste ability to take care of those materials?
We do.
Thank you.
So, members know that the applicant was before the zoning board of appeals, and they did approve the application with conditions. One of the conditions I recall being the use of the mat. No, there would be no engine cleaning. Am I correct?
Right.
No oil changes.
Right, last time I said oil changes, but we're not doing oil changes.
I just want board members to know that zoning board of appeals approved, and it was no oil changes, no cleaning of the engines.
Correct.
You would use the mat at all times.
Yes.
And with the understanding that, that everything would be cleaned up with towels and taken off of, off-site. Am I correct?
Yes.
And...
I have the location. I think you guys wanted the location.
Yeah, I was going to say, did you have something from the Auburn Mall as well?
Yes, I do.
If you could hand it to Sharon, please. And we'll just take a minute so board members can look at it. Is this under the covered garage in the corner?
Yes.
Yeah, just one sec, just so I can...
I was asking to explain something while we're looking at this.
Okay, go ahead.
Can you just refresh my memory exactly what it is that you'll be doing briefly?
We'll be doing a steam car wash. It's a system where we're at, you know, it's not like your traditional car wash where you have a pressure washer. We have a steam car washer, so it uses a lot less water. Like I said, one gallon per car compared to five gallons per car. Basically, just a car wash in every vehicle that comes. People would come, drop off their car, we'd wash the car, pick it up after. You go shopping or whatever you, whatever you do.
All right, thanks.
On-site, on-site.
Perfect, thanks.
It's completely mobile. You know, we don't, we're not going to have a stationary location there that we're going to have, when there's no building or anything like that, so...
You're going to do several turn, the day, right?
Yes, yes. We have two hoses that come out, so we can do two cars at once.
So, I understand clearly, in the winter, if there's a car completely covered with salt from the roads and dirt from the roads, you can clean that car completely with roughly one gallon of water from that steamer and take all of the salt, sand, and everything off-site just with towels?
Well, it would go into the containment mat, and that would suck out the, the salt and things that had come off the car. But yes, we can.
Okay.
We don't get under the car. We're not doing under the car.
Right. So, the containment, containment mat is hooked up to a piece of equipment that sucks the water and dirt out?
And we take that.
Okay. Mr. Simonian?
So, really, I mean, for anyone who's rented a steam cleaner, do their car paint, you wind up at the end with that container of dirty water and the cleaner up.
Exactly.
Essentially, and you've taken away all of the condensation that resulted from the steam cleaner.
Right, there's going to be a little steam, you know, there's going to be a little condensation, might be a little bit around the container, but, you know, we get 90% of the water that comes off the car. There's not, there's not going to be a lot that comes off. We actually use a cloth that takes off most of that salt and dirt. So, the salt and dirt is really coming off with the cloth when we steam it.
Makes sense, thanks.
So, it's, it's a pretty unique system. That's why it's, you know, environmentally friendly. Everybody likes it, that sees it.
Are there any other additional questions? Is there any other, is there any public comment?
Make a motion that we approve the license provided all applicable requirements of the state and town, and any of the department boards and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license subject to all the conditions available stated upon it, failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void and with the conditions of the DCG. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted?
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get that?
Next item we have is Family Food Mart, and we're going to combine these. We have Family Food Mart. It will require two separate motions, but just so we can ask the applicant questions while he's up here, it's regarding a license for the sale of gas and oil, and also an application for a common Victula's license. Is the applicant here? If you could come up to the microphone, please. Give your name for the record and tell us a little bit about what you're planning on doing.
Good evening. My name is Erwin Murillo. I live in Marlboro, 51 Conrad Road for 13 years, and we're here to submit the application for, to reopen the existing business at 860 South Ridge Street, which is a BP gas station. And I don't know what questions you have for us.
Members familiar with where this is?
BP is...
The corner of Albert and Route 20?
No, isn't it up right near Auburn Center?
No, it's heading to Oxford and Route 20.
Yeah, it's on the corner of Albert Street and Route 20, right opposite Hill Street.
Yes.
The BP that had closed right near Brothers Pizza. So, this is for the operation of the station? And the previous business had things like the U-Haul, they had propane. You aware, if you add anything, you need to come before this board for any additional licenses?
Yes. In the meantime, we trying to open the gas station and grocery store.
Okay.
Which we're planning to sell lorry and oil, milk, soda, tobacco. And eventually, we have a existing beer and wine license, which are, we are in process to do the transfer. I have the documents that my attorney is handling everything. We didn't present to the, to the town of Auburn yet, or the, to ABCC. We didn't present to the town of Auburn yet or to ABCC because we have very lousy response from the seller. But we got the PNS and some documents that returned today to us, and we're going to be passing to the attorney tomorrow. And very soon, you will receive the application for... To the transfer of the beer and wine also.
Okay. Mr. Grossman?
Yes, are you aware of the changes that are going to be taking place by the state and the construction of the road?
We aware of the work that they've been doing it. They said that they're going to put a traffic light in that corner, which probably is going to help us to grow the business in that section. And we're not doing any changes to the site except some TLC work inside the store. And that's all about it.
And just for the record, for hours of operation, you have 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Is that seven days a week? Not on the application here.
Yes, we did that Monday to Friday. Definitely, we're going to keep that time. Saturday and Sunday, we're going to have to work with the... You know, we don't have exactly record of how is the traffic at Saturdays and Sundays, but having the beer and wine, obviously, we're going to have to comply with the times.
That's a separate application.
Yeah, exactly.
Regarding the application that you have before us tonight, you don't expect to go outside of those hours? And the request is for 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. for right now, seven days a week?
Yes.
Okay. So that's a Sunday-through-Saturday application. Mr. Simoni.
Just, well, I guess it would be two. I'm going to make a point to ask this of every license application from here on out because we've run into it several times. Number one, are you aware of the conditions from the DCG? Have you been given a copy of your meeting, the results of your meeting with the DCG that we have in front of us? You have three specific conditions?
The development coordination group that you met with, which includes inspectional services, police, fire, the group that you met with to discuss your application.
Yes, we are complying with all the town requirements, which I got all the signatures from all the departments of the town of Auburn here. And we also, in this pink sheet, I also require a signature from the board, which I would like to get the signature in case I get approved or in case I need to get any other document. I'll be happy to bring them over to the board also.
And the other question I have is, I just want to know if you're aware that as the licensing authority, this board is the only entity that can alter your license in any way. There is no one else that... No one can come down there and tell you to do something different that violates your license in any way. Any changes, you have to reappear before this board to alter that license if it's granted here tonight?
Yes, I understand that. And I'm aware of all...
Aye.
...regulations.
Do board members have any other questions? Is there any public comment? Okay, I'll entertain a motion regard...
Make a motion that we approve the license for the sale of gas and oil, provided all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its department boards and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Fair to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and run it null and void and with the conditions of the DCG.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Is there a motion regarding the common Victula's license?
Make a motion for the common Victula license that we approve the license, provided all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its department boards and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Fair to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and run it null and void and with the conditions of the DCG.
Is any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted?
Good luck.
Thank you, good luck. I'll entertain a motion to move up agenda item six... Seven? Well, I'm moving it up now. The vote on the resolution designated Auburn as a Purple Heart Town?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? So we're on agenda item seven, Board of Selectmen's. We've had a request to designate the town of Auburn a Purple Heart Town. And I believe Mr. Westerman had requested to be heard on this. Just give your name and address for the record, please.
Carl Westerman, Winchester, Mass. I want to thank the board, and it's nice to know because this year, we... You know, Auburn's back to the Purple Heart Monument, and it's all town residents that, you know, is in it, but it's statewide. And then, you know, I want to thank you. And, you know, if you haven't been overseas, know what it's like. And at least it gives us time from the town to say, "We thank you for helping us keeping our country safe," and that goes with it. But it also comes in the parts where the families and, you know, the whole families lose members of the family. That's why the Purple Heart Monument, what they're doing, you know, be part of that group. It gives you an awful lot of, you know, thanks to the, you know, towns and the residents and things like that. And believe me, I know, and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holstrom?
First off, Carl, thank you for your service. I've had family members from World War II, my mother, father, and my father's brother, and then from Korea, my father-in-law. And I think it's... Designating a Purple Heart Town is a good thing to do. However, there's not been a lot of information put forward to us. There's been nothing in our packet tonight explaining a little bit more about what it is. I went online today, and there was... They do have some programs of what's going on with... They do have benefits. They do have... It's beneficial to scholarships and, you know, to the veterans and to many people that were involved in the service. And I would like to go forward with this, but at some point down the road, I'd like to see a little bit more information presented to us. But I would be in support of this declaration.
And I'll agree with you, and I just want to point out that this does come from the Department of Massachusetts Military Order of the Purple Heart. That is not a governmental agency. It's a private agency. Just the name, you know, is somewhat misleading, but it's the Department of Massachusetts Military Order of the Purple Heart. Before we take action, I believe Mr. Page had his hand up to be recognized.
Good evening, Wayne Page, 90 Coleman Road. And I just want to say, hopefully, the town will adopt this. The town has been very good to the veterans in our town and the parks that they did. And then with a group of people, we went out and got the Purple Heart for the town for free and got the names put on. But I heard that there is a Veterans Committee that is seeking donations later on to have wings put on the Purple Heart Monument. And I hope when that comes up, that issue comes up too, that you would support it. But please, keep your support going for the veterans and the people of Purple Heart. This town has done exceptionally for their veterans, and hopefully, you'll keep it up. Thank you.
Is there anything else? Mr. Simoni?
Mr. Westerman had come back up, and I didn't know if he had additional information in response to the question that was asked, so I just...
No, what is... I believe this, the group they have, it... I guess they want to make sure that a lot of people understand what the military does, men, women, and all that. And wounded, you get a Purple Heart. You know, a lot of times, we lose a lot of people. But a lot of people don't understand what is involved and what the people in the family give up for them to go overseas and fight. You know, I don't know how else to put it, but let me tell you something. I don't know how many vets we get on the board up here, but when you go, you put an awful lot out. But when you come back, and at least you have the people say, "Thank you for keeping us safe." And I tell you, it's really good because I... You know, on the weekend, you know, I met people and they thanked me. And... But this year, at least they'll get it out to the younger kids growing up to realize what I'm only 39, but what it does to put out, you know, to protect the country. And if I had to do it, I'd probably do it again. Well, I know I'd do it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Westerman. So is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? We're going to go back to gift acceptance. We have from the Department of Inspection Services Board of Health, $1,000 from the Chamber of Commerce.
First, with gratitude.
Second.
We're on gift acceptance from the Chamber of Commerce. Did you want to say anything? Okay.
Good evening, Ellen Hoopery. I'm 34, Everton Avenue, Worcester, Mass., Director of the Auburn Chamber of Commerce. And we wanted to support the Auburn Board of Health. The Chamber each year holds a Health and Business Expo, and this past year, we had our sixth year of running. And the Auburn Chamber Board of Directors have... Has agreed since 2012 that any proceeds beyond expenses, that we would give a donation to the Auburn Board of Health on an annual basis. So we did give one in 2012, which was actually put towards the prescription drop box. And that was wonderful, and we're very glad to support that. And this year, actually, at our breakfast program tomorrow morning, we would like to give a $1,000 donation again from our 2013 Health and Business Expo profit. And we're hoping that you will accept it and use it for the community in a health-related program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? The next item we have is to the town of Auburn, Pappas Recreation Complex from Southbridge Credit Union, an amount of $1,000.
Motion to accept with gratitude. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed or voted? I'm going to ask that we move up agenda item seven C, which is the tree lighting ceremony, and combine that with gift acceptance five C.
So moved. Second.
We're combining them. All those in favor?
Aye.
So we have from Sterns Electric Incorporated, a donation of labor and time for the tree lighting of the tree lighting ceremony on December 6. And the manager is also going to give us an update on that.
Through the chair, thank you. I just want to let everybody know that we have selected the date. Once again, this year, this will be now our second annual tree lighting event, which will be held on Friday evening, December 6 at 6:00 p.m. We held it similarly last year, one week after Thanksgiving. We felt that to hold it the Friday after Thanksgiving would compete with family events, reunions, and retail, which is... That's a big retail day. So we are holding it the following week once again. We had probably 250 to 300 people last year, and we hope equally to have a lot of people again this year. Sterns Electric is donating their labor and services to actually string the lights on the tree, which is a major... It's a major undertaking, and they've donated that to us, so we're grateful to them for doing that. And this year, we have the Auburn High School Band who'll be performing, along with the Auburn community players. And they'll be caroling and singing along. And once again, we're going to have refreshments provided, baked by the Worcester Vocational... The Bay Path Vocational Technical High School. And we'll also have coffee and cocoa available for those who come. And of course, can't have a tree lighting without the famous guest star, Santa. So Santa will be there as well, and the children are welcome to come and visit with Santa. There'll be an opportunity to do that after the tree is lit. So it's a great community event. We're looking forward to it. We want to thank all of our partners for participating in it, and we hope we get a good crowd again this year. And once again, thanks to Sterns Electric for doing this for us on the lights.
Okay. So is there a motion to accept?
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Any discussion? All those in...
Why is it only children that can visit with Santa?
I thought the same thing.
Through the chair, we would allow any age to visit with Santa. Children go first.
Fair enough.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Moving on, we have under member items, we have nothing listed. Does anyone have anything? We've gone through the manager items. We have no tabled item. Is there any public comment, Mr. Page?
I have a few comments, but I'll hold them for the next meeting, too.
Okay.
But tonight, I'm going to end on a good note. I just want to thank the public for the Keep Auburn Warm dinner. We had raised a good amount of money. We're still not... We could be, but we're always looking for more funding. But we would like to thank all the people that went and supported the people in need in Auburn. They always come out every year for this dinner, and they always help out. It was nice to see Mr. Grossman there, and Doreen was in the kitchen with Bob Tatro. But it would have been nice to see more selectmen there and make donations to help our people in Auburn. But we have some very generous people. Even the people that really couldn't afford it were there making donations. And that really gives me a warm heart to know that they come out to support our people. And the committee asked me to come up and just say thank you to all the public that were there that night in support of doing it and helping us move forward. And we are now getting knitted lap blankets and scarves and stuff like that, so if there's any elderly or even anybody that really is in need of stuff like that, we have it and we're willing to give it to whoever really needs it. So... And like I said, the committee wanted me to thank all the people that were involved with that dinner and all the support that the people of Auburn gave us. Thank you.
We have the minutes of March 25, 2013. Are there any corrections or omissions? The chair will accept them as written. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion for adjournment.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Good night.